All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 p.m. on April 24th, 2023. All members of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes from March 13th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion made in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports administrative actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Nothing here.
So, seeing none, move on to agenda item B2, Town Plans Report. Slouda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, I want to note that the housing production plan for 2023-2027, targeting the May 8th meeting for presentation for acceptance here, and then the following with the Select Board, that is still being determined, so that could possibly be pushed out until later in May. But in order to submit to DHCD for certification, we have to have positive endorsements from both the Select Board and the Planning Board. The plan will outline housing goals and strategies for the next five years, and I will have a presentation which highlights the major themes and action items for consideration, and I'll be happy to discuss any feedback at that time. Next item, I want to note the MBTA community zoning, so separate from the housing production plan. We will also start work on a proposed zoning district which complies with Mass. General Law 40A, Section 3A, the MBTA communities legislation. The public outreach will begin in late spring, early summer to ensure that we have a compliant district to present to DHCD this fall in preparation for town meeting next May. Another note that we have no new applications on the May 8th agenda, so hopefully we'll have, use that meeting as an opportunity to kind of get some loose ends tied up. And then one final note, that 2254 Main Street, the former Bluebird Cafe, the former-former, Tokesbury House of Pizza, the kitchen plans for the new operator, the pull-up Latin Soul Food Restaurant, were approved on April 10th, and the new operators are working to get building permits in place to do a full renovation. And I'll let you folks know as we get closer to their opening date. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item B3, street acceptance clarification, Border Road and Grammy's Way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. And Jack Sullivan is also here tonight, along with Carl Propey. I'm just going to start with Grammy's Way. There's two of the same issue on both of these streets, but I'll take one at a time here for you. So, we were in front of you about a month ago, give or take, and you had indicated we were in the process of addressing DPW's comments. We have updated the ASBILs, we're working towards finalizing and addressing all the remaining items. We had a volley of response letters and review letters back and forth last week, and on Grammy's Way, we're down to a couple of items, and I just want to make sure that everything is good with you guys as we move forward. So, we have been asked by DPW to confirm that the street trees have been placed in conformance with the special, with the subdivision rules and regulations. Subdivision rules and regulations are a little poorly worded on this particular section, Section 9.7, where they say the street trees should be placed along the right-of-way, 15 feet beyond the right-of-way, right? So, there's a little bit of confusion there as to what that actually means. So, what we did is we went out, we looked at what was actually planted versus what was actually proposed, and we provided that on an exhibit for you guys to take a look at. It has been practiced in the past that essentially there was some latitude provided to the developers to be able to adjust the final location of some of these street trees as conditions warrant in the field. So, we feel that these, both of these sites, but we're on Grammy's Way right now, were very well vegetated and consistent with the approved plan that you guys approved, I think it was 2019, give or take. So, if I look at, if I look at the request for waiver that I sent you, it's got three pages. The second page shows you what was actually approved, and the third page shows you what was actually put in place. So, we have the approximate number of street trees that was proposed. Again, there has been some latitude to provide these based on field conditions. You can see on sheet, on both of the sheets, that it's toward the end of the cul-de-sac, to be able to place the street trees 15 feet off of the edge of pavement on these smaller lots. The subdivision regulations, I presume, were intended for the one-acre lots. There's very little space in a front yard to be able to place these trees 15 feet off and contend with the utility services. It's not impossible by any stretch, but it's very tight. So, the tack that the developer took, and the contractor that was out there was provide the street trees around the right-of-way. Then there was a handful of additional street trees, or trees that I did not color in, okay? I just identified what was along the right-of-way. And you can see throughout the rest of the development, there's a handful of trees along the property lines, down toward the detention bases, and then on the northern side, there was also an area that was left uncut. So, the request here tonight is that we request consideration for a waiver to Section 9.71 and 9.72 of the subdivision regulations.
Let's start with Mr. Cattell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hanley, you know, I see what you're looking for, and I've been out to the site. Site looks great, coming along. I would just like to see an end to this thing. I mean, it's been going on and on and on. It just seems like everything gets added on to this thing for you guys to resolve. I mean, how close are we with Mr. Hardeman's request to get some things done?
I mean. Yeah, so I think on both of these, we're very close, specifically on Grammy's Way. We, we're going to talk about this request for waiver. I'd like one other clarification. We got two new comments today, which we have no problem. We will address prior to the end of the week. So, I think that if we can resolve this waiver and get on the same page regarding some additional clearing that was done. And this was all brought to the board's attention when we originally came in here like 60 days ago, give or take, but there was no formal action taken. I just don't want to leave anything kind of up in the air as we approach town meeting.
Okay. So, he wants some more trees put in, correct?
He wants trees put in in the exact, my understanding, I don't want to speak on behalf of DPW, but they want it in the exact location, 50 feet on center, 15 feet off the right-of-way around the entire cul-de-sac. For the reasons I mentioned in the letter, that's very challenging.
Yeah. And I understand, you know, his view as far as that goes, but, you know, I also understand when you're in the field, it just changes to some degree. That's why I think we're here for some flexibility to allow you to continue and get it done and get moving on. So, I mean, so I don't have a problem with the waiver, I think, and I love my colleagues' speak as well, so.
All set, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it seems to me that, and if I'm looking at it correctly here, that there's a pretty kind of, kind of an open area where you're trying to leave those trees out. I mean, you know, 23, you know, you're not talking a handful of trees here. You're talking 11 trees short of the plan, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, even more, 23, 23 were required, and you've planted 11 trees.
We planted 11 along the right-of-way, and an additional 13 throughout the development.
Right, but not in the location that was specified. You planted them down sort of in the back area of the lot that was actually kind of clear-cut initially, beyond the scope of the plan back then. Is that my understanding? And I understand that you've replicated some of that, but that doesn't really address the shade trees for the residents in that, at the end of the cul-de-sac there, in my opinion.
Okay, so just to recap, we were asked to put in 23 trees. We have 22. We also left, if you look at the roadway plan, about 200 feet in, there's an area of existing vegetation.
Yeah, but it says the 23 trees were along the right-of-way.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right, right. So, this existing vegetation was not cut, because by cutting that existing vegetation, we probably would have had two more trees. We would have essentially removed some of the screening to the apartments. So, to recap it, right, we have, we were asked to put 23. We have 22 throughout. We have the existing vegetation that remains 200 feet in on the right. And then there's also four existing trees along that intersection. So, part of this is that there's generally been some latitude provided in the field to place these trees in a spot based on field conditions that makes sense. It hasn't been so rigidly enforced in the past, and if it is going forward, we understand that, we'll address that. But it really, there always has been some latitude provided to the developer.
It seems to me that there is room for, even if we were going to, you know, say, okay, well, we don't need to do the other 10 or 12 trees, 12 trees, along the right-of-way. It seems to me that the residents there might wish to have a tree along, you know, along the sidewalk edge near the two left, the left unit and the unit in front of you on the cul-de-sac.
So, the only thing I would say to that, and DPW shared their opinion on this, is that we do have electric telephone cable, gas, water sewer services times three. So, there is, as well as drainage that goes back out to the retention. So, and these units are plus or minus 20 feet off of the right-of-way.
Right.
So, by putting in a deciduous tree that's only 10 feet tall today, right, but has the ability to grow 30 or 40 feet, is going to be directly in the middle of the front yard in a few years. And those roots could be.
Could be impacting the underground infrastructure.
Yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't as if they didn't want to put these in. It's kind of simple. We just feel like, based on all the conditions that we've had, how we reviewed this in the past, this made the most sense.
I get, I understand that point. That's a good point. Is there something that you could put there that would be sort of like a compromise, as different from a tree, that you'd think might, you know, kind of work, work around? It's not going to get the deep roots, or it's going to impact the?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question right now.
Yeah.
You know, if we knew there weren't going to be the latitude that has been provided, we would have not put the additional trees around the development.
Well, no, and I don't disagree with you there, Mr. Hanley, because, I mean, I think it makes perfect sense not to plant a large tree over underground utilities. So, I don't have, I don't have really, that's probably a smart move, really, to not put trees there, I guess. What am I looking at on the lot line in between the, when you're in the cul-de-sac, in between the center unit and the one on the left there? Is that, are there four trees along there?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, so those symbols, that's four different privacy screening trees. So, we have four trees, and that's what I'm trying to get to, is that there are, I think it's 13 or 11, that were planted throughout the development.
Oh, so you're counting those four as four of the additional?
Yes.
That aren't along the curb line, basically?
Yeah, 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 right, right. So, what I tried to do is isolate what's in the right-of-way, what we provided in the right-of-way, and what we provided everywhere. What we're required to do is provide stuff in that right-of-way to meet your subdivision regulations.
I'm going to just make a suggestion here, and, and Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask you, your indulgence for a second here. I think probably it makes perfect sense not to put a tree over an underground electrical line, but that seems to be, if that was part of the original plan, it seems that maybe it should have got picked up then. You know what I mean? So, now we're in a situation where, you know, we have to, you know, look to grant a waiver and so on and so forth. It's, I'm okay with a waiver only because I don't want to impact the underground infrastructure. But I think going forward, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a little bit more clarity.
Sure.
On trees being planted in the neighborhood of underground utilities. That might be something we might want to be more mindful of going forward. But I guess in this instance, I guess I'm okay with the waiver. I would like to have seen trees there, but I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just if we were to say, we'll grant you a waiver for trees that will impact future utilities, I see, so we're, basically, number one, we're short 11 trees, right? As far as right-of-way, being planted on the right-of-way, DPW is saying there's 11 trees that were on the approved plan that, on the right-of-way, that have not been planted. The 13 trees you planted elsewhere don't count towards your total, et cetera.
So, yeah, so that is the contention of DPW. All I can do is share with you, like, my experience working in town, and generally speaking, what we've been asked to do in the past is provide a certain number of trees, right? And we have latitude and flexibility to be able to move those around. So, as we approach this, that's how we, that's, that was how we approached the location of the planting, with the contractor approaching the field.
Okay, so if I were to say, I agree 100%, we do not want to plant trees where they're going to disrupt the underground utilities. That would be bad for the residents. Where else could we still plant trees, but there are maybe different conditions other than that? In other words, I'm just looking to prioritize. You mentioned on that, I don't know which way is north and south, but coming in along the bend, it looks like we're missing about three trees there because there's existing vegetation.
Yeah.
If there was existing vegetation there before, kind of picking up on Mr. Duffy's point, you know, maybe that should have been addressed back then instead of now. Is there anything prohibiting you from planting the trees there in that location?
The only thing that would prohibit us is that we'd have to cut existing vegetation which provides some screening from our development to the apartment. So, we were mindful of that. I personally had discussions with the person that lives on the other side of the stone wall. They asked for as much of a buffer as we could provide them. So, to cut it down, to then put up trees that will grow, but they're deciduous, so they'll drop their leaves as well. At the time when the question was discussed, it didn't make a lot of sense to us. And so, you asked us if there are other locations. There are, right? I mean, we, and that's what we tried to achieve with the trees that are beyond the right-of-way, right? So, if you look at the last sheet in that, there's four existing trees along the, at the intersection, right? So, we kind of keep our spacing fairly consistent with, throughout the, throughout the whole development here. Didn't make sense to cut down existing, obviously. So, we didn't place any in this area here, and then we filled in the remaining portion of the right-of-way and carried the additional trees throughout the open space.
Okay, so let's say, all right, we're going to count four trees towards your total. So, instead of 11, you're actually at 15. We have a resident that it would be nice to have, you know, some sort of testimonial from them, an email or something, saying, hey, there are supposed to be two more trees in this area, but I feel it would be better for me, as in a butter, that they not be put in. Right? Now, we've got a condition where, you know, we have the betterment of one series of residents, but a situation that's going to be worse for another resident who was there before the development. I personally am typically going to lean towards, if they were there first, then, you know, we should probably tip the scale in their favor if it's a balance. So, that leaves maybe another two or three trees, if we take those, I'm up to 17. So, that leaves six trees. We take out a couple for underground utilities. Maybe we can put one more on the LaZot property and, you know, squeeze in one more somewhere else. I mean, I think you could do a little more than what you have here, but I do agree that most of what you're saying, you're pretty close. You're closer than it sounded like in the DPW letter. But I think you could probably squeeze in a couple more, maybe just to keep the peace.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slouda?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add, just kind of along the same lines. Would like to see if there's opportunities to add a couple of trees just to bring us a little bit closer to where the, to where the plan would call for. It does look like there's some gaps on here that maybe we could fit a couple in, where they're not going to be, you know, on top of a utility box or, you know, in between a power line.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just did want to bring up one thing. You do have one tree on the Fonseca property, number 25 Grammy's Way, that is on the electrical line.
I can't, it's near the electrical line, yeah, yes. Right, and that's not what we want to do, right? So, we don't want to do that. And I think it just proves how challenging it can be to get a tree at that location on that lot, right?
Understood, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thanks for your indulgence.
So, I guess part of it is, what is our, what's our goal, please? Because, I mean, we're concerned with the number, but is the number, the number's not really our goal. The goal is?
The goal essentially is to have what is on the ground match the approved plan. That is the standard that we are comparing it against. And they're asking for a waiver to deviate from that plan, essentially. And what complicates this provision is that it is a bit of shared stewardship, as Mr. Hanley mentioned, where the DPW has, say, in public shade trees, because it's in the right-of-way. But the planning board also has it as part of their subdivision rules and regulations, the ability to waive it. Now, that doesn't mean that the planning board has to, you know, waive it outright and not make any adjustments to that or flat-out not issue the waiver. The goal for the applicants, if they'll allow me, is to have this go to town meeting for street acceptance. And this is an item that is a barrier because it's not built to the approved plan, essentially.
Just to clarify, my understanding is that the request from DPW is to confirm strict compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. It's not necessarily where we put them on the plan, right? Because where we put those on the plan, they're not all 15 feet, exactly 50 feet on center, right? So, there's a couple of different things that we're trying to contend with to get through this?
Sure.
Well, you know, there's, in terms of number of trees, when you're talking about having them on-site, that's not a problem. There's trees elsewhere to total up the number of trees. So, if that's the case, and they're just sort of elsewhere, then a number is not the issue to worry about. It's the placement in comparison to what we looked at before, and if they're not placed there now, is that a detriment that, you know, we can't get past? I mean, you know, the way these are sort of, you know, typically done, we tend to, you know, we tend to work with a lot of the normal requirements and how we fit these in as it is. I don't have an issue with it. I get concerned, though, when we have these things, and this always seems to happen with these street acceptances, where they're all at the end, and they're all at our last meeting, five seconds before this all has to be dealt with. The tree thing is not new. This has been going on. You've had to have known about the way this stuff's going down. I understand there's been leeway, leeway in the past, or, but we are all aware we have a new zoning bylaw. Therefore, everything is new. And if we need to check on things, we should be checking on them well in advance and not the last minute where everybody's thinking, but if this doesn't get done, we have to wait six months, which again is an indictment of the fact that we only have town meeting every six months to get things done, separate issue. But, you know, that's where you left. So, you got to come in, now we have to, like, you know, do something immediately to try and rectify a problem that's not really a sudden problem. It's just a sudden issue that we have, you know, try to address. So, you know, I'm not that concerned if, you know, if the buffering is adequate for the abutters, I'm not as concerned. Because that was one of the things, until you said that, was going to be the first thing I was curious about, was how are they going to feel? Because they weren't noticed of this, because this is going on in our administrative actions. So, they don't know necessarily that this is happening and are going to be here to comment on it. So, you know, that is a concern, is that, you know, you think you're getting one thing, and now you're going to look out your window, and you're not. You know, you've discussed it with them. Mr. Chairman's comment, in situations like that, it would be nice if we had sort of that information to confirm that, you know. But I'm going to trust what you said is true, and, you know, that you did speak to them, and that that's their preference, fine. You know, I don't have an issue with the waivers. I just have an issue with trying to deal with these things last minute, always last minute with the street acceptances, that, you know, we're trying to jump through hoops to solve so that it can get in, and we don't get, we, that the petitioner doesn't get pushed off, you know, another six months before they can try to deal with this. But that becomes concerning to me, is that we're trying to deal with those things.
So, I can completely appreciate that, because I kind of feel like I'm kind of in the same boat, right? So, we've made a huge effort since we got the first review letter to try to address these one at a time. We met out on-site, we've had discussions with DPW, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just trying to explain, it's a challenge to get from one, one point, that initial review letter, to where we are. We had a conversation with them last week, was the first time I realized that they wouldn't support a waiver. I wasn't sure if this was a technicality or if this was something that they wanted new street trees, which is something that we've never had to do with before. So, I hear you, but I'm like, kind of in the same boat, and it's been a real challenge for us on all of these ASBILs to try to get these done.
No, I'm not going to.
Yep, I understand.
Go away with the point, but that's my, that's my bigger concern, not what we're asking for here. As far as, as far as I'm concerned, I'm fine with the waiver. Go around the table so we understand where everybody is. Mr. Duffy?
I'm fine with the tree waiver as it is, but there are a number of other comments from engineering. Would you like to address those?
Yeah, I would.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The only thing that the board is charged, sorry, you can hear this too, Mr. Hanley. The only thing the board is charged with this evening is deciding on the waiver. The understanding is that the applicant is going to move forward with the rest of the engineering comments, and the only charge tonight for you folks is to either grant or not grant, or grant with conditions, the waivers. Just so we don't end up rehashing our project.
All right, so then let's stick to that, because again, this is in the administratives, and I don't want to get into hearing-type items when we're not really in that. So, as far as the waiver, you're fine, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Cattell?
Yes.
Mr. Chamber?
No.
Mr. Slouda?
No.
All right, and I, what is the number for this?
Simple.
Okay, okay. So, what is the pleasure of the board as to the waivers as requested by the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the waiver for the reduction in the number of trees from the initial plan.
All right, as shown on the plan submitted this evening, in those sections 9.71 and 9.72. Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye as well, all those opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes 3-2. All right, so you have?
Border Road, yeah, we have the same exact issue. So, on Border Road, again, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. Sure, of course, come on. With Bob Propey, who's the developer for the project. Again, after speaking with DPW last week and realizing that this was more than just the technicality we put to the waiver request, it's the same flavor as what we just went through. I gave you a waiver. Uh, I gave you a waiver request that, uh, is narrative, and then I gave you two exhibits. First exhibit was what was approved, the second exhibit was what actually was, was planted. Um, as you can see, traveling down the right-of-way, on the left-hand side, were essentially exactly what was on the proposed plan, um, or the approved plan. Uh, and then on the right-hand side, as you travel down, there were fifty si- uh, fifty-three conifers, or pine trees, that were planted in, um, uh, in an attempt to screen the abutting lot. So as opposed to putting deciduous trees, seven, uh, Mr. Croopy put in fifty-three pine trees to, uh, to provide screen on the lot. We're requesting consideration for a waiver to section nine point seven-one and nine point seven-two.
All right, we'll just go on the same one. What's up, Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I reiterate the fact that, you know, I'm not a big waiver guy, but, again, when you get to a situation, when you're on the street and you're doing stuff on, on, on-site, it's a little different than plans. Maybe we should be doing a better job going forward, making sure these ASBILs are in, like we were talking about, maybe, and, um, staying on top of it, so it's not last minute, like you said, Mr. Chairman. But, um, I, I would be willing to approve the waiver as requested.
Mr. Duffy?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I, I am gonna, um, not oppose a waiver, um, for the trees, but I do think that going forward, what that's gonna do for any development in the future is, is it's, we are gonna need to see a utilities plan, anything, any underground.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, um, so that we can take a look at the beginning of the process and see if there's gonna be any kind of a, uh, conflict between the two, the, you know, the, the trees that are required in, in utilities, so that we don't have, because obviously, we don't want to plant trees on, on electric utilities. That's, that's, but that shouldn't be a, a pass for, for anybody go- going forward here to, to try to, uh, not plant trees. And if there is a conflict like that, let's say an unavoidable or an unforeseen conflict along the way, s- it needs to come back to, to, to our planner, I believe. I don't think that we can just make some field judgments out there and say, "Hey, that tree's supposed to go here, but let's put it over there because you have an electrical box there." You know, there has to be, that's, I think that kind of feeds into the ASBILs, uh, requirements that we're looking at. And I think, but I think it's gonna come back to, just to get out of the gate in the beginning, we're gonna have to, there's gonna have to be somebody taking a look to see if there's conflicts on these items. So, no problem with the tree waiver.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll ask. Uh, I'm not sure what the answer will be, because this is a different property, but, um, I see your two forty-seven Salem Road, I'm assuming that's the abutter that requested the screening. Do you have any correspondence from them indicating that they prefer this, um, this solution as opposed to the row of trees?
Well, early on, we cut all the trees, he, he, he was a little, you know, upset, he put the road in. Um, we told him we would do a screening there for him, so that's what we did. He said, "Okay." I, that, it's only verbal. I never had really much discussion with the man. He keeps to himself. Um, but, that, his house is basically, I don't know, what is it, ten feet, eight feet off the property line? His house is eight feet off the property line, so there's no way to adhere to fifteen feet there. Um, there's only like eighty feet, and that's where I put the, the trees, to block his yard for his privacy. We ran him all the way down the end, just to kind of shield, he has a garage back there, he has some stuff stored, you know? He's been there for a long time, and, you know, so we left it that way. But, two hundred and twenty feet of his land is forest, out of that four hundred feet. There's two hundred and twenty feet down the rear of the road, at the end of the road, which is basically a forest. And in that area, adjacent to Border Road, there's nine hardwood trees that are probably thirty-five feet high. Again, I think it'd be kind of impossible to go in and plant two to two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees, ten feet high, under trees. It just didn't make sense to us. What made sense was to put a nice screening up, which I think he'd said fifty-six trees. So that's what we did, and I think it looks nice. And, I mean, we've been doing this a long time, we built a few subdivisions in Tuxbury, and we've always moved trees, or, you know, whatever. You know, I mean, no one said anything that we couldn't plant them, and that's what we just, you know what I mean? Why would I go spend more money when I could spend less? It just really doesn't make sense to me.
But, but you planted fifty-three pine trees instead of seven deciduous trees, right?
Right, right. I mean, generally, I, I find this to be a, you know, i- if you like trees, you have to think that fifty-three is better than seven. I just wanted to know if you had any correspondence from the abutter...
No, he was just...
Stating that he was satisfied with this solution.
He's happy he's put them in, and where his lawn is, he waters them, but down the end, he doesn't really water them that much, and he made a comment that they're not healthy. So, on his initial, uh, DPW's initial letter to us, he said that they didn't look healthy. So we had hired an arborist, you know, to come in. He basically said he's gonna fertilize the trees. The trees are, they're healthy, they, they just need to be fertilized. They have some of these spider mites, et cetera, bad work. It's normal for trees. Um, street trees, you know, deciduous trees can also get, you know, have disease too. So, I mean, uh, we hired this guy to come in this year, he's gonna fertilize them, he says that they'll be fine. That's on his suggestion, on his initial comment, but, so that's what we did there.
Okay, so, um, that's all I have for the applicant, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add my two cents that, uh, if, if we are going to be a tree city in the U.S.A., then we should probably start looking at an integrated tree planting plan and site utilities plan, and make sure that these types of conflicts are avoided in the future. No further, uh, comments.
Mr. Lazotti?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have too much further to add here. I think agreeing with Mr. Duffy and Mr. Chairman here, that we should, you know, if we are gonna make these changes, bring them to us earlier. It seems somewhat reasonable that, you know, if somebody had requested some shading there instead of the trees, that's fine, but we should, you know, know about that prior and not, you know, at the last second here.
All right, thank you. So this, this is pretty much the same as the last time, which, you know, the only tweak here, I guess, would be, and this is gonna be not specific to this, I guess this is gonna be specific to going forward, that I think because in the past, we've been able to move them around and whatever, without really too much thought about it at the end, and that doesn't seem to be consistent with the new bylaw requirements, that we can't just throw together a plan at the beginning now, like, for ex- you just mentioned, that there are thirty-five-foot trees there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that means they were there at the beginning. So when the original plan was done, and we showed trees going in underneath them, clearly that wasn't sensible then either. You know what I mean? It wasn't just discovered just now. Those thirty-five-foot trees have clearly been there. So, going forward, this is obviously gonna be something that can't just get thrown as part of the thing together and not really thinking about utilities and thirty-five-foot trees, or whatever it is. So when we do this upfront, um, and if it goes and starts going along as you're doing it, uh, you know, and on-site, there starts to be some, some issues, I think we're gonna have to have that conversation sooner in the process, um, before we get to the end, knowing that you're gonna be held to the original one, you know, that way, I think, and again, not you, this is gonna be everybody now, because it's popping up now. Um, but, you know, there won't be, we can't have going forward, you know, well in the past. Clearly, we're working on a renewed one, so now going forward, everybody's gonna have to understand that, you know, this will become an issue at the last minute if you leave it till the last minute, because that leeway that existed in the past isn't there with the new bylaw. I think that's the easiest way to look at it. So as the plans start coming in in the future, we're just definitely gonna have to, you know, have that thought, that, you know, they're kind of gonna go where they're gonna go, and if they don't fit now, they're not gonna fit later, kind of thing. So, all right, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board on the request for this waiver?
Making motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the waiver.
All right, so same motion as our previous motion. Uh, if all those members in favor say aye.
Aye, second on that, well, second.
This is on the second.
Okay, oh, okay.
For the board. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
All those opposed?
Yeah, I like to...
Okay, so this time it's five all.
If you want to say aye for it.
All right.
You want?
All right, very good. Good luck.
We have one more comment here, on, one of these comments from the DPW.
Right, but we're not gonna do the comments, because we're not doing that part of it. We're only handling the waivers that are on the administrative.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, takes care Agenda Item B three. Moving on to Agenda Item B four, Committee Designee Assignments. So, um, uh, this, when I spoke about, with Mr. Lazotti about this the other day, I was sort of stunned to realize that we only have three appointments, um, right now. That's very rare. In the past, sometimes people have been on two or three, because of what's been going on. But having just finished up bylaw, just finishing up the school, we just have a little bit of a lighter load right now. Um, some of those things may change as time goes by, so those members who aren't currently serving on anything, um, would probably be up in line for whatever pops up next, should it pop up. But, um, the members that are currently on committees are satisfied with staying on those committees, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, thank you.
And Chair as well. So therefore, I, I'll ask that we have a motion to reappoint, um, the members to the committees as they stand now.
So moved.
The motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Takes care of that one. That moves us to Agenda Item B five. This is sixteen hundred Shawshin Street Approval Not Required Plan. Do you have anybody here for this?
Stick your name for the record, and the floor is yours.
Uh, Dan Demora with National Development.
Okay, if you want, just pull that mic down, I don't want it so high. There you go.
There you go.
And if you just let us know what you're doing.
Sure, uh, so this is an A and R plan submission for the, uh, for the subdivision of the sixteen hundred Shawshin Street parcel that persists today, splitting it into two parcels, uh, for a future development plan. We intend to come back. Uh, submit on May eleventh for a, I believe it's June twenty-second, uh, planning board meeting for our site plan special permit, uh, for an eventual warehouse project on one portion of the lot, and then a redevelopment of the facilities on the H and B portion of the lot, um, downsizing their facilities to, uh, to kind of consolidate some of their equipment, reduce some of the structures that they have in place currently on the lot.
All right. Uh, what's up, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just on this, I was trying to, been trying to get my bearings on it a little bit.
Sure.
So, and I don't know if I'm, if I'm getting ahead of things. How will there, how will you access the, the second lot?
Uh, by second, uh, is, there should be a labeling lot, A or B, sorry. I just want to make sure I'm referring to the correct lot.
Oh, okay, Form A.
So the one where, you know, there's one, I guess it looks like, you call it the dumbbell section, right? That, it narrows down, uh, that is an access drive. The main facility will be on that larger portion on the rear side of the quote-unquote dumbbell. Uh, there'll be a s- a storage structure in the front portion. On the larger portion, the more, uh, I would call it standard size parcel, uh, there are two access points, um, one to a front parking section that'll be about mid-block, uh, and then one further north that'll lead to a loading bay. It's kind of along the, uh, the current rail, rail line.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Duffy?
Uh, I, I don't have any comment in, uh, right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazotti?
Um, what did you say, Lot One versus Lot Two, which is gonna be proposed as?
Sure, so, uh, one lot will be a speculative hundred eighty thousand square foot warehouse facility, distribution center. Uh, the other lot will be a redevelopment of the existing facilities, which is a mill facility, the Holden-Bugby organization, uh, just downsizing and consolidating into a primary mill structure.
No further questions.
Mr. Vitale? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand what you want to do, and new lot lines to establish what you want to do coming in the future, so, uh, I have no problems with this.
Chair has all said as well. Uh, do we have a motion to endorse the A and R plan?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, motion made. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All set, thank you.
Good luck. We'll see you in the future. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, ninety Chandler Street. Uh, this, uh, signed special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
The motion made. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you get settled, just give your name for the record, and the floor is yours.
You're doing. John Peterson with Metro Sign and Honing. So we're here, uh, proposing a new sign. The property there is actually owned by the town. It's the home of the Tuxbury Youth Baseball Fields on East Street. There's actually, uh, three fields there. I guess that whole property extends out to, um, Livingston, that's actually part of the Chamber Road property there. So they're, um, looking to propose a new electronic message center. Uh, there used to be a directory sign right there, uh, it's kind of diagonal from the senior center, across from the Tuxbury Hospital as well. Um, will be illuminated, um, no message center. Just give updates on Tuxbury Youth Baseball and happenings, and, uh, so they can inform the public about what's going on with it. Um, and just, you know, recently, we did have the sign up top there, that Wamisit Lanes Park. Uh, they will be sponsoring the signage over there.
Say that last part again?
The, the signage on the top there, the Wamisit Lanes, they're, they'll be sponsoring the, the, um, signage over there.
Okay, so at the top, it's gonna say Sponsored by...
It's, yeah, it's gonna have that Wamisit Lanes up there.
Okay. Is that...
The original application that was submitted had a TBD in that section, and then a revised rendering that Mr. Peterson provided shows the Wamisit Lanes sponsorship along the top, so that's why you have two there. So that one that you just put down is the original, the one in your hand is the, the new.
Yeah, sorry about that, that's my confusion there.
And the, the section at the top is stagnant, that's just...
Correct, yeah, that won't be moving or anything like that. There'll just be, um, acrylic posted on it, vinyl, sorry, posted on it.
This makes sense, because I just want to get this out of the way too, but, um, the sponsorship is, how is that, is that indefinite? Is that for an X amount of time? I ask that question because in the event that Wamisit stops sponsoring your board, what happens to that section?
Um, it's actually, the, uh, owner of Wicked Cheesy is paying for the, is covering all the, paying for this too, so he's a sponsor, but that was who had, he had sponsored for now, for the time being. He's been advised many times, as I told Alex, that any new sign that goes on there needs to be appropriated.
Okay, all right, okay, we'll start, uh, start with Mr. Lazotti.
Sure, um, what's the, so for the, uh, for the digital sign here, what's the content gonna be? Is it gonna be text-based content?
Yeah, just updates on Tuxbury Youth Baseball, you know, sign-ups, um, maybe games that are upcoming, they can post on there. Just, you know, information for the town to have about the, the baseball over there.
Okay, so it's not gonna be like advertisements for...
No.
Wamisit or...
No, no, no.
...there, okay. Um, and if it's mostly text-based content, uh, does it need to be color?
Um...
I think our bylaws kind of highlight that most of the electronic signs should be amber only.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like it looks nicer with the color, um, when over there, you know? We have gone, we have done a few previous in town and with the color, and it, it does look, you know, it makes it look a lot nicer in that sense.
I, I will point out that, um, what you're saying is accurate in that it, it mentions it ever, but we've sort of, you know...
Ignore that.
Twenty, twenty-first century...
Yeah.
Um, acceptance of the way the new boards are kind of done.
Um, yeah, and other than that, no further questions.
All right, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let's see. I realize that, so that, that little area, that's down behind the hill...
Correct, yes, yeah. They, when we went down there, I had gone out there in about December. They wanted to put it somewhere in between the two fields, but I told them that, you know, you're not gonna have the ten to fifteen feet of space there to really...
Right.
You know, it would be right on top of the, the, the street there, so that's like the most sensible place to really put it over there as well.
Now, I see that it is, um, uh, it's, uh, did you end up ever getting a drawing? it's, uh, did you end up ever getting a drawing to the planning department for showing the setbacks from the road and so forth? Because I don't really see that here.
Sorry, I haven't, one second. Did have a sight in, sorry, man. When I had gone out, I had gotten a 15-feet setback at that location the first time I went out there to measure.
15 feet from?
From the roadway, yes, from, um, East Street, yes, correct. Because that road you see open there, that's that little cut through.
Chandler.
There's a little cut through there from, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It cuts through from east to Chandler.
So was it on the other side of that little dirt road there, the little cut through, or?
Yeah, so it'll be between the field and Aldrich. It'll be right in there. There's a little space and opening. And the hill, there's a hill that goes up there behind the backstop.
Yeah, a lot of people are going to be mad they can't park there now, though.
Oh, no, they'll be?
They're still parked there.
Yeah, they're still parked there, yeah.
Okay. I really don't have a problem with any of it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is for advertising for Tewksbury Youth Baseball.
Correct.
So, I mean, last I checked, Tewksbury Youth Baseball was very much an ingrained organization within the town of Tewksbury. Web, very up-to-date website, emails, and almost, I imagine almost everybody in town has a neighbor that is part of Tewksbury Youth Baseball. I personally, I don't really see the need for an electronic message board at all. And generally, I find that it's out of character with what I feel is a more quainter, older version of Tewksbury. We have the library right down the street with a typical, older-style individual letter message board. We have our senior center. And, you know, I guess my concern is if we approve this, what's next? Tewksbury Rod and Gun, Livingston? I just, I don't think that these organizations with today's technology, that this type of advertising is better for the community. And I don't think it's something that improves the drive along East Street or Chandler. So that's all I have. Those are my comments.
Mr. Talia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of my questions is if you're coming on Long East Street towards 93, all right?
Yeah.
Is that true, you're going to block a lot of that vision of the sign? By the time you get to the street, Aldrich Street, you almost buy the sign. So that was one of my concerns. I know the hill is there, but could they do any configuration as far as moving it down a little bit, maybe?
Like closer to the field?
Closer to the field and do something, and putting it up on a pedestal?
Something that they definitely will.
I guess my concern would be the fact that, I mean, I understand the need for the sign, and I know it's, it's, you know, 2023, you know, so, um, and they do advertise a lot. We have a ton of kids in town, but, I'm sure Tewksbury softball would be up there eventually. I know it's a baseball sign, but, you know, just to promote the other events in town as well, I think they'd be willing to do that for other events, you know, on that sign. So be multi-purpose and not just Tewksbury baseball. But I think a different location, moving it down, will maybe, you know, allow it to be seen better coming in both directions. You can see a fine coming down towards the Chandler Street, but coming back the other way, it looks like it's hidden somewhere.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't know what my other board members think, but I know the location well. I've coached there for years. I've seen my grandkids play there, you know, tonight as well. But, um, and I know the hill. I've sat on the hill a lot of times, watched games.
Right.
So I just think, I'm not sure if that's the true, but it may be blocked by that tree, so.
Yeah, the location's definitely been a big discussion amongst that property. So that's definitely something they can?
I know they're doing three or four other signs in town.
Yeah, they did the scoreboards.
Scoreboards and lights and all that stuff. And we're coming, we're doing an approval for lights at LA Field. And I think they're renaming the field again, I think, or something. But, um, but, so, Tewksbury Baseball is up and coming and is running pretty well again. So that's good news. But, yeah, I'm all in favor of the sign. I just would rather than approving it tonight, maybe rethink the location with the board, maybe, or your board, or Tewksbury Baseball Board, you know, as far as, you know, what our guys may think as well, so.
Okay.
Just my opinion. All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right, so, I got everybody right? Yeah. So the one thing I'd say, and I agree with Mr. Talia about that you're only going to be able to see the sign probably going in one direction, except for maybe wintertime when you guys are selling your Christmas trees, and that tree doesn't have any leaves on it. But other than that, you're going to have a hard time seeing that coming from the Tewksbury part of, you know,
Correct, yes.
from center of town. So I don't know if the placement's great, but that brings up my next concern, which is foul balls. If they start smacking off this thing because it's just moved closer to the field, how durable is this? Because it's going to look like terrible if it's getting whacked with ball and then it's not working.
Yeah, that's also been discussed.
Those big blank pieces on the screen and everything.
That has also been discussed about, you know, even kids just maybe going back there and hitting a ball at it or something like that, so.
So the answer is it is durable to that kind of strikes?
Yeah, and I mean, if, you know, anything does have it, we're out there right away fixing it, so.
Well, to me, that's going to be one of the things, is that, you know, we've done this with the others, is that, you know, that they'll be maintained, you know, in good working order and, you know, conditioned as far as the display and everything going forward. So that'll, you know, obviously it's something just to consider with,
Easy fix.
potential strikes. The other one, and this is just aesthetically, and I, you know, I don't want to add a bunch of, you know, cost, but has anybody looked at all about the bottom section? Having that with, you know, sort of that brick that most of, a lot of the signs that we've done have sort of that brick, almost like planter, you know, on the bottom section, just so you don't have those big, you know, you just have the big holes sticking up. You know, and it's more decorative than anything else. It doesn't really serve any other purpose other than that. But it just sort of takes away from just those stick legs coming up out of the ground because, you know, you need the height. But, you know, it does kind of break up that lower section. And since you're looking into moving the sign, you know, if we could look into that, if that's a possibility, you know, just like I said, I think aesthetically, it'll just, it'll help. And I think, do you have anything else on? On the, yeah. Do we, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we've ever done one exactly like this, but typically, we have the address put on these things as well. Do we, is that something, this is not a business or anything, but if somebody's looking for the baseball field, I suppose they don't need the address to determine they bribed.
I've been here forever. I didn't even know it was 90 Chandler.
So it looks like a baseball field, so I guess we don't really need it on there?
I would defer to the board, but my recommendation is that it's not entirely necessary for this because it's not going to be necessarily used for emergency identification purposes, which is typically why we do that.
Okay, all right, good enough. All right, so?
Mr. Johnson, another comment if I could. I mean, I know you were concerned about it being hit. I don't see many people hitting home runs to that degree.
Correct, yeah, there's a big backstop there. The foul balls usually get caught up in that backstop there.
Having coached there for years, I think it's probably far enough away. It may be even more susceptible hitting foul balls where it is now when people's fouling it up. But maybe not because the back stair, the back thing is there, but I don't know. So would you go higher now that you're not on the hill as far as the sign? Because now you're going down about 6, 7 feet.
Yeah, that's something I'd have to talk to the designer about, about how to, how they would work around that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, with that, I'll open up to anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this. Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to continue it if you could, Mr. Chairman, until we get some feedback from you as far as you and your board, maybe, about the location of the sign, maybe?
Okay.
Continue until our next meeting?
All right. And just let Alex know all the?
Well, we're going to schedule it right now. So I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue this until?
7:05 on 5/8.
I should have left. I leave you a revised May 8th because we had a couple of continuations. So we're down to 7:15.
Oh, you know what? I put the wrong one on top, sorry. 7:15.
Thank you.
On May 8th, right?
Yep.
May?
So a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, see you next visit. We're going.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, 2 Radcliffe Road. The app has requested to continue. We have this penciled in for 7:00 PM. So do I have a motion to continue 2 Radcliffe Road to 7:00 PM on May 8th?
So moved.
The motion made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Brings us to Agenda Item E, which is 770 Main Street. This is the site plan review and land disturbance permit continued from our 410 meeting. Do we have anybody here for 770 Main?
Chairman, there's a letter requesting withdrawal.
No, just the letter requesting withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's right. That was this one. Okay, so we have a motion to, not a motion, I'm sorry, request to withdraw without prejudice. I presume, right? So do we have a motion for that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion made.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item F, 1693 Shawshin Street. This is site plan review continued from our 410 meeting as well.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates, David Gianetta, on behalf of collective premium cannabis. He's handing out just an update to the plans and a brief narrative kind of summary of the changes in response to DPW comments as well as VAI comments, very high level. Essentially, we've done, we've listened to the board's concerns regarding the sign first and foremost, and we have eliminated the message board segment altogether. So now that waiver request, that's before the board, is strictly dimensional for a reduced setback to the right of way. So we were, we were listening to you. The VAI, summarizing the VAI comments, they really, they were looking for things interior to the site like signage. They wanted stop signs and stop bars in addition to the weight binding signs that the board had suggested a couple of meetings ago that made it onto the plan. They were looking for the site distance triangle kind of language to maintain it within the landscape islands at the entrance, and that's now on the plans. DPW had a remaining comment regarding the sidewalk. We had, if you recall, last meeting, we had proposed the five-foot sidewalk. Did we? I think we did. Regardless, the five-foot sidewalk is on the site plan, and it's updated to conform to DPW's detail. It's five feet wide concrete, and they want handicap ramps on either side of the entrance. So that's on there. So generally speaking, very, very minor comments that we've addressed. Our goal this evening is to take any other commentary from the board, and we're very eager to move on to the next step in the process. As you know, planning board is first, select board follows. I think throughout the four meetings that we've been before you, we've been very attentive and tried to respond and address any and all of the concerns. So we hope that if there is something outstanding, that the board would consider conditioning that as a part of any approvals. Unless Dave, you have anything to say, we're happy to answer any questions or to dive in deeper if we need to.
We'll start with that, Mr. Talia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have many comments, but what I did want to make aware to you as well as other applicants is, I know the hour is now at 10 o'clock AM, but in the event they change at all, I think the traffic study or the traffic pattern may in turn, because there's no peak hours in the morning right now, but that may change in the event there's a new time schedule. So, I mean, those numbers, if you're opening early, would be affecting the day-to-day traffic on your street and every other development that's doing cannabis as well, you know? So I hadn't thought of that until somebody brought it up in one of our peer reviews. So it's something that we may need to look at.
Well, just so I'm clear, though, but those are requirements under, the hours are set by?
CCC.
No, those are set at the local level by the select board. So if they were to change those hours of operation, that would apply to everyone, and that would, you know, we can certainly make it a condition of approval that if hours of operation are to change, then new traffic data would have to be submitted to substantiate that if we're taking peak hours into account.
Yeah. If that, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, but, I mean, I don't want to presume, but if the select board was going to change the hours of operation, I would hope that'd be something that they would take into consideration before they up and change the times.
Yeah, I'm thinking more down the road, Mr. Chairman, in a year or two or something. They want to, they want to, look at, you guys want to come in and say, any way we can change the hours from 8:30 till 8:30 at night or something. Those seem to work better or something. But again, now we're talking about the AM peak hours, which we're not discussing now because you're not open until 10 o'clock, and it's after peak. And none of the other applicants have mentioned that at all either because it's after peak hours, so. But just wanted to make that aware to the board members as well. But other than that, I'm all set. I'm glad you decided to take away the message board, and I'd be willing to approve the waiver for your sign as proposed.
Thank you.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is the by 2 minutes sidewalk, is that what the DPW was looking for there, or?
Concrete. We had proposed asphalt, and they wanted concrete.
I see, okay. All right, and that's going to be, that's going to be documented somewhere?
Yep.
I appreciate that. That's doing a lot. I know you wanted to push that out a few years, but I think it's good to get the project done and done it all at one time. Better for everybody, I think. And I'm also okay with the sign waiver, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, forgive me if I'm getting some applications crossed, but I thought that you were putting in a bike rack inside for employees. Is that correct?
So, yes, we would have bike storage on the interior of our secure receiving.
But that doesn't exempt them from DPW? Because it says here they're still requesting a waiver for the bike?
Right, right, because strictly, and I discussed with Mr. Gianetta as well, strictly speaking, the bike rack is meant to be on the outside, publicly accessible. But you folks had discussed with Mr. Gianetta the allowance to have it be indoors and really only be accessible to employees for safety reasons. So with that said, the waiver is still technically required because it's not going to be on the outside, publicly accessible.
But we still have the employee bicycle parking inside?
Correct. Yeah, and that's on record in an email to Alex previously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lozati?
I don't think I have any additional questions here.
All right, the chair doesn't have anything to add. I'll just check, Ms. Lowery, is there anything outstanding that we're not catching here?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I will note that because we're just getting the sidewalk details right now, they will have to be routed to DPW to make sure that those Ts are all crossed and the Is are all dotted. But other than that, I wouldn't have any reservations. I did include in your packets the proposed waivers and conditions which were sent to the applicant last week. And if you wanted to, we can add the provision that if the hours of operation are to be adjusted in the future, that future traffic reports are submitted to support that.
Okay. Yeah, so why don't we, we'll add that as a number four. The petitioner has no issue with that?
None.
You have no issue with the waiver or conditions that were sent to you?
No.
Okay. All right, so I don't have everything else. I think this point, we've gone, the first, on the first waiver, that states that the dumpster on-site must be fully enclosed. Much like the bike rack, we're waiving the requirement as we say it, but obviously, and as you pointed out, your dumpsters are required to be?
Blocked.
Blocked and whatnot because of the conditions of?
Cannabis Control Commission.
Cannabis Control Commission. So when we're waiving it, I just don't want anybody at home to think that there's going to be some open dumpster there be some open dumpster there because we're saying you don't have to enclose it. That's talking about where it is, but also you have it locked and everything.
Yes.
So that's sort of a different thing than what people might be used to. So I'll just say it so when they hear us waiving it, it doesn't sound, sound bad.
Yeah. If, if I may too, just real quick to that point, it is still going to be screened on one side, so it'll be blocked from the, the view of the public. And in our Littleton location, we have no screening whatsoever. It's totally visible, but again, we keep it completely locked, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that did just get jogged in my memory is the Health Department has a requirement for all dumpsters to have a dumpster permit on a four-inch concrete pad. And they're also going to ask for it to be fully enclosed, but we can have that discussion with the Health Director when we get to that stage, but I just wanted to put that on your radar right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're all set up here. We'll open this up. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? If you have something, you gotta come up to the podium. I need your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Just, if you want to pull that mic down, that way they'll pick you up. There you go.
This is clarification for me. Kathleen Furlong Norman. I live at 35 Kingston Road in Tewksbury. Just looking at your agenda, the item now, 1693 Shawshin Street, Community Care Collective, this is for a cannabis shop, a store, dispensary?
Yes.
And then your Pure Tewksbury at 735 1699, that is also for cannabis?
Yes.
They're both in the same vicinity, the locations?
Yeah, and just for, if your clarification and anyone at home, the way this works is all of these, anyone that anyone wants to do has to come in here first for the site plan. All we're checking basically at that point is, are they meeting the requirements necessary for it to be able to be sited there, as the bylaw says? The second step of that then takes everybody, if they get that approval from this board, to the select board for the rest of the process of getting approved. So really ultimately it becomes the select board's determination of the which ones and where to approve, not us. So we're just one step in the process, but you can't go to the next step until you've seen us in getting, gotten our approval. So you could see 10 potential ones all in one place. It's gonna be up to the select board to sort that out after and determine from the total we're allowed, how many they do or don't want to approve.
Thank you, thank you. I have been in touch with Alex too, so I will follow up on this. I just wondered about how much community information is given out so we are aware of the process and be engaged when we want to be engaged. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Lauder, there's just the four of us, is that right?
Correct.
On this one? Okay. And just, you know, that's four out of four for this, right?
A simple majority.
Three out of four, three out of four for this, I'm sorry, that's right. All right, so we'll start with the waivers. So the waivers, as requested, are Section 3.64C-10, Section 6.1.8D, Section 6.1, 6.1.13, and Section 6.2, 6.2.8B. Those are the waivers as requested and discussed. Do we have any, do we have a motion on those?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the waivers as requested.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, four zero. Now as to the site plan itself, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review at 1693 Shawshin Street with the conditions and waivers proposed.
All right, so, and then the condition, I'm sorry.
And if I could add, pending the final review of the DPW of the sidewalk.
Sidewalks, yep.
Yes.
All right, so we have the four, the four conditions as discussed earlier, plus the addition just now of the sidewalks. So five total right now. All right, so we have a motion on that? There's your motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, four zero as well. All right?
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second, second. Two meetings. Moving on to Agenda Item G, 1 Main Street. This is also continued. This is a site plan review from our 10, 410 meeting.
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue to 58 as requested.
All right, we have a time of?
7:10.
7:10.
7:10.
All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Bring us to Agenda Item H, which is 2122 Main Street. The site plan review also continued from our 410 meeting. Once you guys settle, just state your names and the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening to the chair and the board, Valerio Romano for the Stories Company, 2122 Main Street, cannabis retailer, joined by Ian Ainsley from Meisner Brim, our professional So I think, you know, we have a few outstanding engineering comments that remain, and I, our request is fairly simple. We're not gonna have them resolved at tonight's hearing, but my understanding is from the previous hearings that the board is, is fairly favorable to our application, and my, my request would be that we, if, if the board is inclined to vote on our application, that we ask the board to do so, and then make resolution of the outstanding engineering comments a condition of our building permit. And so that's basically where we're at. I don't want to belabor it unless there's some specific questions that we have. We basically have five comments left. We're not asking for any waivers, you know, we're, we're really there. Part of the, you know, the, the difficulty of our, of our proposal is it's just new construction on that sort of vacant lot, so there's, it's a little heavier lift. But other than that, you know, my request would be if the board is inclined to vote, to see if we can keep the process moving along, and then just, yeah, make the building permit conditioned on the resolution of the engineering comments, including fire. And of course, we're here to answer any questions.
And, you know, obviously, that's, that's your, you know, that's, that's up to you to, if you want to request that, if the board wants to agree. Just the, the, the one caveat that I would give you is that once it's out of our hands, then there is no more with us, and at which point, that means that answers to anything submitted doesn't work on the same timeframe, meaning it doesn't, doesn't need to be dealt with to get it back to our next meeting. So just so you understand that you sort of lose the, the push of it needing to be at our next, you know, meeting, that the answers and the review and all those things getting done, it's just between you and engineering at that point. So that's.
Yeah, I think, I think we understand that, and you know, given the fact that it's, you know, new construction, I mean, we, we love being in front of the board, don't get me wrong, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, I think we'd love to get to the next step with the, with the Board of Selectmen and see about the host community agreement and, and continue to work with engineering. Ian's been doing a great job, yes.
Right, but just so you understand, until those issues are sorted out with engineering, you won't go to the next, I'm correct, right?
That's my understanding, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that, and I've discussed with, with Attorney Valerio Romano as well, is that the select board just down the hall is going to be setting up prospective times to hold the licensing hearings. They will not receive a license until the site plan approval is out of the town clerk's hands and has been filed and has all of its final approvals. But my understanding is that the board, the select board that is, is going to move forward with hearings with folks who either have their site plan approval or are maybe a meeting away. And that's just through discussions I've had with the town manager and the, through the chair of the select board.
Okay, and through the chair specifically, what we're requesting is site plan approval with conditions before, you know, the building permit is issued. So we are asking for a vote on the site plan approval. And, you know, really, there's, you know, a couple steps here, right? So there's the host community agreement, which allows us to apply to the state, and I know that's not really your, what you have to deal with. And then we can continue to work with the select board on, you know, for the licensing requirements, and, you know, the, the nuances in your zoning bylaw, we, we can address with the select board. You know, we're at the board's discretion. I mean, you, you're definitely being thoughtful about this, and, and we're happy to do whatever, whatever you'd like, but it, from our sense from the last time we were here a month ago, that we submitted a, a pretty comprehensive application and, and, you know, given the board pretty much everything that was asked for, and, and our goal is to sort of keep it moving forward, knowing that we can't have a building permit issued until we resolve the outstanding comments. But we are asking for site plan approval at this point with those conditions.
All right, good enough.
If that makes sense, and I, you know, I, I defer to Alex and the board.
Yeah, like I said, I was just confirming that it's not gonna be held up in the limbo between us and them, but if they're gonna move forward with it, pending, you know, them sorting out their last few issues, then fine, then I'm okay with that if the rest of the board's okay with it.
Yes, that's my understanding, and to clarify, the site plan approval will not be filed with the town clerk until we have those, these last five comments resolved and DPW's seen them and has given their blessing. That's the practice we've been using with the other contingent site plan approvals, and then that way it's not a, a game of trying to chase down those conditions. The conditions that I sent you folks, the six, six and change that I sent, those will be the ones that are incorporated into the site plan and land disturbance.
Perfect, and so, yeah, I mean, we're, we reviewed them and we have no, you know, objections or, or problems with any of them. Yeah, but so, so it won't go to the clerk until we resolve all the outstanding conditions?
Right.
And that's the same for the other applicants as well?
Correct.
So we're on the same footing as anybody else who has, okay.
Okay. Mr. Duffy, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, I see from your engineering that you have addressed many of those, many of the issues.
Yeah, if I can just talk about it a little bit, I, I think we're very close. Like I said, we're down to five. One of them is to confirm that a water line is active, one of which is to confirm, I think, grade lines in the plan, which is just a drafting thing. So these are mostly pretty minor. I've talked to Andrew Stack, the town engineer, kind of back and forth, and I think I have a pretty good understanding of what they're looking for. So there's nothing in here that I feel won't be resolved imminently very soon. I'm hoping to even submit this week. I just couldn't, couldn't get any time for this, this meeting, basically, so.
Now, and then I see you do have a plan where you kind of showed a, a pathway, and I think that was based on our last meeting here, that you wanted to try to do a one-way around the building. Is that, are you, are we sticking with that plan?
Yes, yep.
The idea?
That's the new site plan with the one-way around the building.
I don't expect, you know, from the plan that you have in front of you, I'm not expecting a significant change in the layout of the property. I think the only thing that would show up on there that would be of interest to you is they're asking for some more pedestrian circulation, which is just gonna be a couple more crosswalks in the parking lot in a connection to the sidewalk on Main Street.
Okay, and you will update the plans, of course, to submit to DPW in planning and engineering, you know, regarding the, the other comments, the not depict tactile warning panels and so on and so forth? What's the story with the swept path analysis? What's, where are we with that, the turning analysis?
So the engineering department basically deferred to the fire department, said, you know, talk to them, see what they want. I talked to Captain Zawicki, I believe is the one that does the plan reviews. He wants larger turning radii, basically, so the, the swept path analysis that I did, I did use the town's fire apparatus, and it does show that the apparatus can navigate around the building. Captain Zawicki said the state has a code for the turning radii that he wants to see implemented on the plan, which I can do. So I am going to, to do that, and I did talk to him today about doing that. So that is something that I expect that we will be able to provide to his satisfaction. I just haven't, haven't been able to get it in and get it reviewed in time for the meeting.
Okay, well, then, then I'm okay. I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In an effort to hopefully not, hopefully help you see ahead, what would you foresee is the potential impact if there's an issue with the code required turning radii?
So there is, I believe.
And just to be clear, would we lose parking space? Would we lose snow storage area?
So.
Because I just don't want you to get circled back into DPW limbo.
No, I don't blame you. I don't think it would cause a significant issue. The pavement in the back would get closer to the rear of the building, and I do believe that one or two parking spaces in the front would have to be striped instead of spaces to make that work. But we have, I believe, 16 or 17 additional spaces compared to the zoning minimum, so we have, you know, a significant amount of spaces beyond what's required. I don't necessarily think that's an issue per se, but we will probably have to lose one or two spaces to make that work.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're going in this eyes wide open.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had questions about the auto turn as well, so we'd like to have something in, in the packet from the fire department approving that, so that, that's all above board and, and they're willing to say, yes, it'll work, you know? Think they want to hold off putting the, the sidewalks in or the granite curbing in to make sure.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, your permits seem to have a common condition where the, there's a condition in there that says the curbing won't be installed until the fire department physically goes out there and navigates the site.
They want to go in there with the truck officially and make the run.
So there is, there is always that door left open.
Yep.
You know, before you get a, an occupancy permit, so.
But that, I'm all set. I think you did a great job on your, on your application.
Thank you.
I was remiss last time, and having, this is iconic, because you can't vote on this, so we'll just skip it to me. No, I'm all set. You know, we've gone over this enough times that, you know, you guys are comfortable with the last couple of outstanding things that you can deal, excuse me, directly with engineering on, then I have no issue. You've dealt with everything you can deal with for us, and that we've asked you to deal with, so I don't have an issue with, you know, the last couple of items on this. Again, don't like doing the conditionals, but I understand the way this process, we're trying to get, you know, this solved because there's a next step for you to get to with, you know, another board, so it is a little bit different, so I don't feel like we're necessarily going against what we typically try to do. There is this other factor to kind of, to weigh in on this, so otherwise, I am all set. And then I think I already heard you say it, but I just want to hear it one more time. You guys are fine with the conditions that have been submitted to you, the six conditions?
Yes.
For the permit, right? All right, all right. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the land disturbance permit.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, good luck.
Thank you to the chair, members of the board. I really appreciate your time, and Alex will obviously be speaking soon. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item I, this is 553 Main Street. Site plan review continued from our 410 meeting as well. engineering, plus an ultimate, you know, even if it's at the end when
Sure.
you go out and check it out, but that the fire department is satisfied with the sweep analysis and the actual ability to sweep on the truck on site. All right, so we've got those added to the six that we have here. All right, so there's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the land disturbance permit.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, good luck.
Thank you to the chair, members of the board. I really appreciate your time, and Alex will obviously be speaking soon. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item I. This is 553 Main Street. Site plan review continued from our 410 meeting as well.
To you, take care.
Once you get settled, you state your name for the record. The floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman, Alex. My name is William Cosotis. I'm with Lazy River Products, and we are proposing adult-use cannabis location at 553 Main Street, Unit 2, in between the Papa Gino's and Ocean State Job Lot's.
Do you have anything for this evening?
Yes, I have some plans that Alex had requested, and at this point...
Yeah, we have, right?
Okay. Other than that, I think we have met all of the outstanding action items that Alex had us follow up on from our last meeting. The only outstanding issues, I think, right now are signage-related, in that we are asking for a variance, not a variance, a waiver, because the name of our company is significantly longer than a lot of the other business names that may have been proposed in front of the board before. Lazy River Products is quite lengthy. So with the town's new requirements on signage, it would really put us at a disadvantage with the length of our name, as far as the size of the sign, because we have a certain amount of width to deal with, and it would really limit us on the height. So we've asked for a waiver and have proposed planning to show what we're asking for with regards to the extra signage request above and beyond what would have been allowed based off of the distance from the street and the size of our storefront. Sorry to make that so long-winded.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fertia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So your signage, are you including a message board on that sign or not on your application, or was that removed?
It has not been removed. We are here to ask for the board's consideration in the matter. If it's going to prevent us from moving forward, we'll have to consider that, obviously, but the goal for us today is to, is to close on the meeting. But it is something that we feel is warranted, just being our location on Main Street and the other businesses on Main Street that are already using full-color electronic message boards. We feel if it's going to be allowed in town, it's probably the appropriate spot to put it, being that it's on Main Street where others are already permitted. And we have brought sample imagery of what we'd be posting on there. We're a product development company, so for us, the goal is not to, and I'll also just say that we have been actively running an adult-use cannabis now for over two years, and doing that successfully under the CCC's guidance and regulation with regards to marketing. We've got active billboards and signage on major highways, on Route 93. We've had them on 495 and on Route 3 before, too. And in order for us to have signage up on those boards, we have to follow the CCC's requirements on what's allowed, and they have very tight requirements. And we are not proposing anything different here in Tewksbury. We would be abiding by and adhering to all of the laws required by the state of Massachusetts to be providing this type of marketing material, you know, to the public eyes. And so for us, we're really just trying to, we're not asking to put imagery of product up there or anything that would be, you know, negatively viewed by the general public. This is just an opportunity for us to talk about some of the vendors that we do business with and vendor names, some of the different products that we produce, and the images that we can show you guys. There's no imagery of any plant products on there or vape products. It's really just the exterior imagery of our packaging to let people know that we do create things like sleep-related products and sleep aids. So, I mean, this would be our last-ditch effort, really, to sort of fight for this, just in the sense that we feel it's already tough enough running these businesses. It's, we're incredibly handcuffed out of the gates as it is. And so for us, our business is retail, and our goal is to bring people in off the street to come in and shop with us. And it's sometimes very limited to, it's hard to do that with just a standard storefront sign that just has your company name on it. Doesn't really give people a good indication of what you're doing and what you're all about.
So just my opinion, and I'll ask you some more, something else, but, you know, I don't like the idea of a message board. I think when people in Tewksbury know what they want, they're going to come to your product, your site on Main Street, regardless of whether there's a sign there or not. They're going to know where it is, they're going to go there. A message board, I don't think is going to be that much of a draw for people to come in with the message board, in my opinion. So I'll let it go with that. So I'd have a problem voting for the waiver for your signage, you know, with all the package you put together, so. But, so in a previous meeting, you mentioned that the, your store would be there for the van to pull into and unload the product inside, is that right?
We have a secure delivery port at the storefront, correct, yep.
Okay.
And it's in the plans, it's reflected in the plans that we've already got developed. There wasn't, it wasn't a part of the process to bring them here to the planning board meetings, but we do have finished plans already for the site that do include that drive-in secured delivery bay.
So you'd have to do some work to that site, because you're not going to get in there as is now.
What we have to do is just literally shift the door over 12 inches. The only reason that we couldn't get in there now is that you're referring to the post that's currently there in front of the door?
The post there, I don't think any van will be able to get in there, post or not, but, I mean, doesn't seem like it's big enough for a van to get in.
There, it is, as long as we adhere to the plans and shift the door over. We're going to be moving the door. There's no, it's not a structural load-bearing wall there, and we can actually remove some of the CMU block closer to the storefront glass door and bring that door over closer to the storefront entrance.
I guess my only other question is, is that even allowed? Will you be driving a van into a existing building that...
It's been done before, so that's what that carport, we didn't build the carport, it was already there to begin with. So the town, at some point, had already allowed this with the previous tenants.
I think they allowed the door for access, but I'm not sure, quite sure whether we have allowed the drive-in facilities there. There's no curb cut there. I was at the site, and it's just a walkway that's...
There's a curb cut on the walkway to drive up onto the, to drive up onto the walkway.
Yeah, there's no curb cuts on the sides to determine a driveway coming in, but...
Yeah, there was no paint, I mean, we would do whatever the board required. It's not a requirement that we provide this drive-in security. Honest to God, the reason we did it was because we felt it was the most secure way of doing this.
Yeah.
Just in our own experience, we've, we've done this in Draken, and we've got gates that delivery vans drive into, they get locked down. It's, this way, people are driving into a secure building that's under lock, key, and camera, and the door closes, and then the product is unloaded.
I understand what you're trying to do, yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I just was curious as to whether that's even an allowed access for what you want to try to do, but I guess that will be down the road, so. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you mentioned last time, that last meeting, that you were going to actually have a, you know, a spotter, basically, for when vehicles were going in and out of that garage door. Did you not mention that?
I mentioned our ability to have, we're going to have probably 30 to 35 employees at this location, so there would always be enough people on staff to come out and assist with blocking sidewalk traffic.
That seems like it could be a sensible precaution.
I absolutely agree with that.
You know, and not only that, but, you know, I think if you're going to be doing some restructuring of that garage door opening, you know, they make, you know, it's no different than a vehicle driving out of a parking garage in Boston, you know what I mean? There might be an alarm-type sound that, when the door opens, or something along those lines you may want to consider.
If it appeases the board, we would absolutely look into that.
Well, I mean, it's, I don't think it's something that we can make you do, but, I mean, if it was me, I would not want any people walking down that sidewalk when I was moving a vehicle in and out. That's all I'm saying, maybe some mirrors, whatever, you know what I mean? Some typical, standard precautions for moving the vehicle in and out, especially where in proximity to the front door to the place, you know?
It's very possible that we could even likely have some pre-constructed gates that are literally kept in the garage bay. When the cars come out, we can literally just pull them out and just block the two sides of the traffic right out to the asphalt or to the parking lot, so.
It's just a little safety, safety consideration that you might want to, might want to consider. So the only other thing that I saw, I see you're looking for a waiver for the shrubs. I guess I sort of get that because it's already a pre-existing parking lot and so on and so forth, so, you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. You need to mark the loading areas on the plans if that hasn't been done already.
So because, because this is going to be a slightly different type of loading area, similar to the previous application for 1693 Shawshin Street, where they are accommodating the intention of the bylaw in a different way, so there isn't going to be an exterior marked area where the loading area is because it's going to be inside. So that's something that Mr. Cassiotis and his team will have to discuss with the building commissioner and the fire department when the permitting time comes.
Understood, okay. And I, I think, when it comes to the electronic message board, do we have a rendering of that? I don't really see...
It was included in the original sign package.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, but, but that's okay. That's going to be basically just your, your electronic sign message board added to the existing sign up front. Is that what we're thinking?
Correct, right, exactly right. Beneath where the Ocean State Job Lot's sign is currently, right beneath that would be where the electronic message board would be installed.
Okay.
And again, just to reiterate, I mean, this is an opportunity for us to talk about things like gift card sales, you know, during holidays, you know, and to talk about specific types of products that people might be interested in. To one of the other board members' points, yes, people are going to know that we're here, but there, we have, I mean, in my Draken location, it's not unusual for us to see 300 new customers every week.
Right.
So people drop off.
You have some good guidelines from the Cannabis Commission as well, though, right? As far as what you can put on a sign?
They are incredibly strict, the requirements.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would, if I, I don't mean to interrupt, but if, I would be happy to make, you know, if, I understand how critical this issue is for some of the board members here.
Well, it's a new issue to us and the townspeople here, you know what I mean? That's, that's what it is.
We would be welcome to sort of ensure that we were meeting and adhering to all of the CCC's guidelines regarding marketing and what we put on this message board to make it a part of our renewal for licensing here with the town, so that if, and this could, we would be willing to have this reviewed biannually or quarterly even, so that in the event something did come up and somebody in town complained about what they were seeing on the message board and said, this is, this is not something that I want people seeing, and they came and complained about it, then the board could cite us for it and remove the ability for us to continue using the board.
Sure, and that may or may not happen, and again, we're not here to, we're not here to be the sign police, you know, but, you know, it's just a fair question that I think that some of the residents may, may have as well, you know. So, and, but, you know, I understand that it's more controlled by the Cannabis Commission than it's going to be locally, and if, if and when something does come up down the road, then I think maybe that's a time where it could be addressed by this board or some other board.
And I can also just say that if we were doing stuff that was out of lines from the CCC with regards to this, not only would the town penalize us, but the CCC could literally remove our licensing and prohibit us from actually conducting sales for doing this, whether or not it was allowed by the town or not. We have, because at the state level, we have to, we are required to abide by their guidelines, and if we don't, we are subject to punishment.
Very good. Okay, so I'm okay with that, with the, with the sign board, and I'm also okay, especially with that location, is, you know, it's perpendicular to the street that you want to expand your, your storefront sign a little bit there. It looks like about, you know, maybe 15 square feet each, each direction, which is roughly, you know, three by five each way. I don't have a problem with that either, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just kind of go through these and add my thoughts one through six. One, I think that makes sense based on the location and the way it's situated on the site. The loading area is, again, kind of a no-brainer. While you were mentioning gates, I was thinking of, you know, when I go to Home Depot and they want to operate the forklift, they roll a couple of gates across both ends of the aisle. I think mirror on the column and gates, something like that would be an excellent solution. Again, not necessarily in our purview, but I'm sure the townspeople would be appreciative if that was there while they're going from Ocean State Job Lot to Papa Gino's and hopefully stopping in to see what your business offers to the community. Number three, again, that's fine. The location is where it is. I haven't really changed my thoughts on the electronic message board. I think with marketing emails, the fact that a large percentage of your business is done through internet purchasing, people just coming in for four minutes, picking up, dropping off, and I think that that's, that's going to be sufficient for most of it. I don't see the need for the electric message board sign, and again, I don't think it's consistent with the area. The, so your facade sign over the building, I mean, I pulled up Google Earth and I'm looking, and, you know, you've got a point as far as, like, your sign actually seems to fit the location a little bit better, but everybody else's signs just seem so tiny. So, you know, I'm not kind of on the fence about that one, but I guess I'm inclined to say that yours is probably more along the lines of what the signage could be there. It's not, you know, it doesn't become a huge eyesore or anything like that. It's just, it is going to look very out of place where Ocean State Job Lot has a massive facade and just some tiny signage. And the last one was the freestanding sign, which, again, I think your, your regular backlit freestanding sign is fine. Again, I'm just, I'm still just not seeing the need or the benefit to the town to have an electronic message board. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Zodi.
Yeah, did you mention for the electronic message board, you had some sample imagery of things you would put on it?
I do.
See it?
Absolutely.
Hopefully I just turned it on, not off. We'll find out.
That's just no signals, yes?
Not that bad.
Oh, did you look, did you look? There we go. It's over there, too.
Oh.
They both came on, actually.
Yeah, go.
Interesting.
I'll turn this thing off, then. We haven't used the fancy new thing yet.
Well, is that, is that part of our, for the people watching at home?
I thought that was for the Celtics or the Bruins if we had a meeting during playoffs.
I don't think we're on TV at this point. We're on TV at this point.
Joe just gave us...
Oh, they're just their films or streamed for YouTube?
Yeah.
I know we're on camera, because I've seen them, so.
So I can bring up just some sample images. I mean, part of what we're thinking about leveraging this display for is to advertise some of the relationships that we have. We do a tremendous amount of charitable giving. It is a huge part of what our organization does. We are very ingrained in all of the local communities that we work within. Draken and the greater Lowell area has benefited over the last four years of our presence here, even though we've only been open and conducting business for about two and a half years. Our presence here over the, over the four years of being ingrained in that area, we have done a tremendous amount of giving and have a tremendous amount of relationships. All of these organizations work directly in the greater Lowell area, including Tewksbury and the greater Tewksbury areas. So we would be using this to offer, to advertise some of these types of relationships. Every month, we are donating, every month we select a new charitable organization and donate funds literally every single month to a new organization that we select. We also do a couple of big, bigger events over the course of the year, things with like the Clean River Project, where we're going in, going out and actually doing like homeless encampment cleanups along the river and so forth. It's, so, we like to heavily advertise this stuff to let people know what we're doing for the community. It's not just an opportunity for us to advertise the fact that we sell cannabis, okay? It's really more about letting the community know that it's really helping us to remove the stigma surrounding cannabis, quite frankly, if it's leveraged properly, and that's the way that we intend to use it. Let me see if I can go back and show you some of this other... So we also do custom artwork for all of the products that we create. We have an artist that we work with, believe it or not, out of Hawaii, and we give them ideas. They send us all of our creative feedback for specific lines of products that we develop in Draken. So it's just fun artwork that we associate and bring on to t-shirts, and it's really just a branding opportunity for us to brand the different types of products, again, without bringing in cannabis to the picture, okay? And that's the big thing. We want to keep all of this clean and fun, but let people know what we're doing. This is one of the products that we do for our nighttime product. You can see here that the package itself is displayed in the top. This is one of our nighttime products. It's a gummy product. Nowhere on here do you see anything about cannabis, really. You do see the initials TH... You do see the initials THC on the lower package underneath nighttime, but that would be your only indication that this would be something THC-related. Otherwise, there is nothing in this image that would give you any indication that we were selling a consumable marijuana product or cannabis product. Again, branding is a big part of everything that you're going to see on all of our imagery, because that's what we're trying to do here. We're in retail, and in retail, brand, and we have a brand that we're trying to build here. So, with that, you know, brand reinforcement is big, and any opportunity for us to do that is huge, whether it be an electronic message board, a sign, or social media or Go Bs, go Cs. We do a lot with local Boston sports, and so we are obviously... Our customers are, you know, like everybody else, they like to watch the games, and we like to let people know that we're there to support them during those times and that we're also part of the local sports culture. This is another product right here, okay? This is a breath spray.
I think that's a good sample.
Thank you for that. And kind of as some of the other board members have mentioned, I still do kind of remain a little bit skeptical of the, you know, the requirement for the sign there. I think one other question. Last time we chatted, you had mentioned traffic was pretty much standard retail kind of throughout the day. Some of the other cannabis retailers have mentioned that it seems to peak right at, like, the last closing hour, so just want to confirm that your traffic that you're seeing is still...
Our traffic is nothing like the guys from Smith. That store that they have in Lowell is an anomaly, and it's not a very... Yeah, it's a very unique location. We don't get busy at 10 o'clock at night. My sales taper off at eight, and I've got two and a half years of sales data that I'm happy to share with the board to show them exactly when our busier time... Our busy times are month by month by month, day by day by day throughout the year. So, I mean, our busiest times, we have a spike, to your point, we have a spike in traffic typically around lunchtime, that 12 to 1 timeframe, and that's because we have a daily promotion that runs from 12 to 1. It's a drive-time special that we have, and then we do another one around 5 to 6, 5 to 7 p.m. in that timeframe as well. So, that's when we see our two spikes. It's typically geared around the commuters' travel times, quite frankly, and lunch breaks, so...
And then for the wall-mounted signage, again, I don't have much of a... It seems like it would relatively fit in with that plaza. It does look... The Ocean State one does look particularly small, you know, compared to some of the other ones. That's all my comments.
All right. So, we'll go in reverse order, so we'll start with the electronic sign. I am the most likely person to give someone an electronic sign of anyone on this board ever, but in this case, I'm going to agree with most of the members in saying that I just don't think it fits here. I'll just say that it's for a different reason than maybe some of the other members, which is, when you have multiple stores, as you have in this site, if there's going to be an electronic message board, I think it needs to encompass the other businesses as well, not one business and then the other stagnant signs also on the board kind of thing. You know, to me, it would make more sense if it's somehow sort of more of a group effort for the plaza, and working it that way, to me, would make more sense than to just have one kind of in the board amongst the other signs. It just feels weird, you know, for one business in the site to have it, because then, you know, if I'm the other business, the first thing I'm thinking is possibly coming here and asking for them as well, which generically, I don't have a problem with, but then I'm going to have a problem with having multiple boards, message boards, on the site. At that point now, I'm looking at it as an oddity rather than a cleaning up of the old and often outdated and, in a lot of cases, ugly signs that, to me, is, you know, a reason for approving is a lot of times is that these are just much, much nicer than what exists in most cases with the older, you know, signs. But that's, in this case, it's not going to... It doesn't quite work that way, because we're talking about one business amongst several. So, you know, I'm probably not going to, you know, I'm probably not going to hop on board with the message sign in this case. You know, what you have, as far as what you normally put on the board, that those are all, you know, excellent things that would be fine on a message board if you were a standalone. You know, if your site was by itself, I'd be more inclined, probably, to hear more about the message board, just not here with the other, you know, with the other signs and the other businesses, so...
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a comment on that? And that's an excellent point that I hadn't really considered, you know, that it could just be a pile-on type thing, and maybe landlord, other tenants, and so on and so forth, need to kind of go back to the drawing board, and maybe there could be an electronic sign board that could be shared, an electronic sign board that sometimes has your stuff on it, sometimes has Northeast Electrical, sometimes has Skybox, whatever, whatever, but it does seem like that it does need to go back to the drawing board on that.
Okay.
All right. So, that takes care of most of that list, because most of them have to do with the electronic sign, at least for me. I agree with everyone else as far as the one on the building. I think that that is a reasonable ask. I would agree with everybody, but, you know, the other ones, probably, it wouldn't have been the worst request from any of those others to have asked the same thing, because it's a, you know, it's a pretty huge facade in total, and you can see where, you know, sticking to the normal parameters is kind of get lost in that sea of green just wrapping around the building. So, I can understand that request, and I don't have an issue with that. It's not a ton bigger than what you already would have been allowed, so I'm fine with Shrubs, fine. Yeah, number two's fine. So, otherwise, I'm all set with the rest. With that, I'll open up the audience. Since there is no one in the audience, I suggest that we will not have any audience comments. With that, I will bring it back to the board.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So, just looking at the numbers of the waivers, four and six, if we... If the applicant decides to withdraw number four, does he no longer need a waiver for number six?
So, the waivers, numbers three, four, and six, all relate specifically to the electronic message board sign, because the electronic message board sign is a special permit and a supermajority. If that is something you do not move forward with, then we would just move forward with waivers one, two, and five.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a feeling, Lou, of as well for the sidewalk?
Correct, there is. So, that was a number determined by the DPW based on a... An estimate that was presented at the last meeting, based on discussions with the town engineer. I do understand that there was something that was inadvertently left off, so I don't expect it to go up more than, like, $1,000 or $2,000, but this is pretty much what it's going to be, and if I do not receive a revised estimate from them, then this is going to be the number. But it was agreed upon in principle that these folks would not be responsible for constructing almost 600 feet of sidewalk for our one unit.
Okay.
I agree.
So, then we're setting the number at 21, 126, 73, with the caveat that there may be a slight adjustment?
Correct.
Is that...
Yeah.
Is that called a the planning board fund? Sidewalk fund?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. So, that's the one condition that we have listed, so you're fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. There's nothing else, right?
No.
Okay. All right. What is the pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, you know what? Before I close it, before I move on to that, what do you want to do about the...
We'd like to... We'll pull the request for the electronic message board.
Okay. All right. So, that takes out three, four, and six from the waiver list.
Correct.
All right. So, now, what is the pleasure of the board?
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. As to the waivers, we are now down to three, which is section 6.1.12. C, section 6.1.14, and section 6.2.10.4. B. Do we have a motion on the waivers as requested?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site plan review motion, we have a motion on the...
A motion to approve the site plan review.
All right. With the sidewalk...
Yes.
Condition, which is set at 21, 126, 73, with the caveat that there may be a slight adjustment to that in the potential window of about $2,000 or...
Yes.
With that understanding, okay. All right. So, we have that motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Good luck.
Congrats. Good luck.
Appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item J, 1699 Shawshin Street. That applicant has requested we continue to our May 8 meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the 1699 Shawshin Street.
All right. Next to 7:05, and we have a second. A motion made, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.